Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, the second for 2023. Today is the 9th of March 2023. I now call for councillors' attendance, and there's myself, councillor Allen, councillor Johnic, councillor Tully, councillor Fekna, councillor Millian and councillor Kunselman. I don't have any apologies at this stage. I can see councillor Doyle also coming. Has anyone heard anything from the deputy mayor? No, okay, thank you. I don't have any apologies, so I'll move on to the acknowledgement of country. If our city council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet, we pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures and stories of our proud people. We now move on to declarations of interest on matters on the agenda. Are there any declarations of interest? There are none. Business outstanding, there is nil. So we'll go on to the first report, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee of the 9th of February. I move, sorry, are there any errors or corrections anyone would like to put forward for those minutes? No, I will move them. Do I have a seconder for those, councillor Fekna? Any discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item two, which is the request for expression of interest for lease of land to community groups. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officers any questions on this matter? Yes, councillor Tully? In what area, on a planning or a community side, do you think? So I'll see, I'm not sure who will be... Well, I think Mr Polls coming up here.
Our general manager, Ben Poll, can I come up?
Morning, Mr Poll.
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Ben Poll, general manager, community, cultural and economic development.
Councillor Tully, you have some questions?
Yeah, thank you. Particularly this one in Augustan Heights. Is that the block that's adjacent to the commercial development? It appears from the map it is, commercial development to the east.
I don't know the site specifically, councillor. I'd have to potentially defer to my colleague in planning. Was there a question relating to the potential use purpose of?
Yeah, that's the site that was earmarked originally, not by us, but for a fire station, which was rejected because of the topography and the major gully line that runs through that block. Now, we're just talking about leasing of these properties? Yeah.
Well, at this stage, it's simply putting it to market for open expressions of interest to see how the market might respond. Any decision to go forward with any of the proposals would always come back to council. So this is simply a market testing, as such, to see what interest there might be out there.
I think councillor Tully, it's behind that shopping complex near the post, the police station.
Yeah, it's the adjacent one. Yeah, that's the one with the major gully line and angula sort of thing, which was rejected by QFES for the appropriate, you know, the costs of fill and levelling it, or constructing walls. So that's one issue. So this is purely just for leasing for a period of time and to see what the appetite is within the community for that.
Yes, is the short answer, yes.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr Poll? Thank you very much, Mr Poll. The recommendation is that council endorse the development of an expression of interest for the three parcels of land in Springfield, Spring Mountain, Augustine Heights, which are dedicated to council for community use under the Springfield Infrastructure Plan. I will move that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Johnic. I'll now open up for discussion.
Thank you, mayor. I'm really, really pleased to see this come to council. I've been in discussions with a number of community organisations and groups within the area for a long time. The Y, the YMCA and the community groups do an amazing job and they are running out of space within our division. There are a number of community groups, including scouts, girl guides, the Muslim Society for Greater Springfield. There are so many that are willing to collaborate and work together. So I'm really, really looking forward to what applications are received based on this expression of interest in the community. I know it will cause a lot of excitement for some of those groups and I'm really pleased to see it come up. So yeah, it's a great thing.
Thank you councillor Johnic. Any other discussion? I guess, I mean, I just, I know that we have an urgent need in those fast-growing eastern suburbs for more community facilities and I support the very fair, open and transparent way that this EOI will be progressing. So I look forward to getting, receiving some expressions of interest on these parcels of land. In that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item three, which is the Revised Infrastructure Asset Management Plan. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this policy? No? In that case, I will move the recommendation, which is that the updated policy titled Infrastructure Asset Management Policy, as outlined in Attachment Three, be adopted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? I just think it's tidying it up and updating it with our strategic documents. So I put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. The next point is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report, January 23. May I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Graham Martin, acting general manager, Infrastructure and Environment Department.
Thank you, Mr Martin. And thank you very much for this report. You know, I do like the reports, especially the images there, which show how things are progressing for our residents. How are we tracking with our capital delivery? I know there's a lot of squeeze with increased costs and supply chain issues, but how are things tracking? Are there areas that we should be concerned about?
As of the end of January, yeah, we're tracking very well. To be honest, I think we're probably tracking a little further ahead of where I would have expected, given some of the constraints in the market around us, not just our own Ipswich market, but broader across South East Queensland as well. It's fairly tight. I think we're starting to see some pockets of areas where we may struggle to complete some of the works on the timelines we've got currently. And some of those, again, we spoke, I think, might have been last month or one of the previous meetings, about some of the issues we've got in the procurement within the market. So we're having some results coming back where we've got smaller jobs going out. We're not getting a good response from the market. We're having to go out and package three or four of those jobs together, which is not a problem in itself, but it just means we have a longer internal procurement process to get those larger jobs together. And then instead of having four contractors working around the city, we have the one contractor going back to back to back. So it extends the completion date, but it doesn't really affect, I guess, our overall delivery from a big picture perspective. I think generally we've had a more mild summer than we were expecting. Certainly, the La Nina effects are there in terms of high cloud cover and sort of some other temperature effects, but fortunately, we've been missing all of that heavy rainfall. So we've been able to progress, I think, fairly well to what our budget plans were. Going through February, we're looking at revising our, and being fairly critical of ourselves on our forecasting for the end of financial year. And I think during February and the end of February report, you'll start seeing a bit more, or a drop in the forecast total for the end of financial year. And it's now coming back in line with what the budget expectations were originally, so.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Martin? Yes, councillor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr Martin. Could you refresh my memory, please, just around that issue on having to retender, you know, not attracting a lot of interest from, is it smaller contractors as opposed to larger businesses? And does that translate to not locally procuring? Just want to understand that a bit more and why, potentially?
Good, yeah. I don't think it necessarily relates to not getting local contractors. Probably what it means is the size of the contractor is a little bit different and starts narrowing down our choice of, preferred choice of contractors, I think is probably a better way of putting it. And I would put that down to, you know, what we call smaller sized projects, given our scale of what we do, is probably on the larger size of what some of the owner-operator projects would be. So I think all the owner-operators are busy out there, seem to have plenty of work on and are able to subcontract to the larger people. And my previous experience would be that if you're able to subcontract to a head contractor, you remove some of that risk of payment, of your QA systems, of your safety systems, of other things. So you can fall underneath someone else's banner and because of the buoyancy in the market, they're probably guaranteed ongoing work, rather than needing to tender for job, for job, for job, which in itself can be a bit of a burden for an owner-operator size organisation. So I think it's not necessarily a negative thing, but it's definitely a reality for us in the market.
Good question. Thank you councillor Doyle. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr Poll. The recommendation is that the Capital Delivery Report for the month of January 23 be received and contents noted. I move that. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on this report? Yes, councillor?
Mayor, just on page seven of eight of the report, level of service. I'm just wondering how this level of service works when sub-clubhouses are not up to standard, to the current standard. So I'm just looking at the defined service standard.
So I don't have a page seven, it starts at page forty-four.
Page thirty-seven then, on the big, I was just talking about the infrastructure assessment management policy, but page thirty-seven of one hundred and fifty-six?
Are you talking about the previous motion that's gone through or this current report?
Are we finished this one?
No, this is the Infrastructure Environment Department Capital Delivery Report?
Oh, okay. I'll wait till we get up to this part of it.
Are you talking about the infrastructure policy?
Yeah.
We've already done that, we just voted on that?
Okay, I've missed it.
No worries. I'm sure you could always do it. Questions on notice. Thanks councillor Allen. Any other discussion on the Capital Delivery Report? No? Okay, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you.
Excuse me, chair, I'd like to make a declaration of interest, please.
Yes, sure.
So... In accordance with one section, sorry, in accordance with section 150 EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Nicole Johnic informed the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item number seven, titled Development Application 6610/2022/MCU. Recommendation, Parmac Properties Investment Proprietary Limited, fast food premises at Goodna. The nature of the interest is that I have, along with members of my family, we hold properties in Goodna and have been approached by the applicant Parmac Properties Investments Proprietary Limited in the past relating to these holdings. I will like to voluntarily leave the meeting when this matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much councillor Johnic. Thank you for proactively declaring that conflict of interest.
I've just flicked an email to Vicky as well, thank you.
So I can't quite hear that, sorry?
I've just flicked an email to Vicky as well.
I do note that you did declare that when this came to us before, so thank you very much. We'll move on to item five, which is the Exercise of Delegation Report. Has anyone got any questions of the relevant council officers on this report? No, in that case, I will move the recommendation that the Exercise of Delegation Report for the period of the 24th of January 2023 to 21 of February 2023 be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that report? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item six, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. May I ask you about the Land Trac BMI Cleanaway matter? I see that it's still awaiting judgement from the August of 2021. Is there any update?
Unfortunately, no. We're still awaiting the judgment. Got no further news.
Are there options that we have to get some type of outcome?
There, I understand I'm not fully an expert on this approach, but I do understand that there is a possibility that one of the parties is able to approach the Queensland Law Society, to seek, the law society, to ask for an update on the judgment. I'm not familiar with that approach, but I do know it's an option available. Other than that, it's unfortunately a matter of being patient and having to wait.
Do the courts have a service-level agreement where they have to give?
Not that I'm aware of.
A judge with a year, two years, three years, or?
No, I'm not aware of that, no. Unfortunately, some of these things take some time.
Thank you. I guess just going on to the judicial review of oneless, would you mind providing, is there any other information?
Unfortunately, no. No further update on that. Still awaiting the judgment. I do expect that one to be sooner rather than later, I suppose, because of the nature of the type of application. It's an merits-based appeal, it's a judicial review, so. But there continues to be delays in all sorts of judgments, so probably a little while for that.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I don't have any other questions of Mr Bowles. Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you. I've just got one question in relation to the item Spring Lake Holdings, on page ninety-three, and particularly the status, which is good to see that there's been a decision in January. Well, just read this relevant bit and what the significance of it might be for other developments in the Springfield area. It says, "Her Honour Judge McDonald ordered that the Planning and Environment Court does not have jurisdiction to hear and determine the appeal from an application to amend the area development plan approved under the original", oh, sorry, "approved under the Springfield Structure Plan". Does that then prevent, if that's a precedent that's utilized, does that have a significant effect on potential developers within the area?
It does in a way. It doesn't completely eradicate all options that a developer has to appeal a decision. So the Springfield Structure Plan is interesting in that it has its, I suppose, its own framework for alternate dispute resolution. And that process is quite robust and it is effective when we are negotiating decisions, be it positive or negative decisions. So it doesn't completely remove the option of appeal, but it does remove that particular pathway. So it could be a potential important precedent down the track, but so far, as far as dispute resolution, in the whole period of time that we've been working with the Springfield Structure Plan, the ADR provisions have been generally adequate to deal with disputes. So, you know, on paper, it is, you know, relevant, but the practical outcome may not be as severe as that line suggests.
Just to clarify, had this applicant gone through the ADR process at all? Or did they go straight to the court?
I would have to refresh my memory. It was quite some time ago. I do believe that we went straight to the court. I've just got a nod from my colleague, so yes, that's correct.
So you still think it's intact, though, that provided the ADR process is followed, the appeal process is still intact after that?
There's certainly more discussions to be held with the applicant, absolutely. So now that I've had a few seconds to think, my memory of this is that the starting point of the appeal to the court was for a deemed refusal under the Planning Act, which brought upon this preliminary point. So in that fairly long period of time, from the beginning of that process, which I think was in 2020 or 2019 now to now, we haven't been running the ADR process. And I don't believe we have officially started the ADR process under the SSP. The reason being is this decision, for example, is still able to be appealed, should the appellant not agree with this position and have a preference to go through the Planning Environment Court rather than the ADR process. So one of the potential outcomes from further discussions and negotiations through this process is that the ADR process starts, but we would need to probably secretly from the court to start that process well outside the timeframes. Normally, you have, I think, twenty business, twenty calendar days to start that process. So we're outside of that. So we would have to seek court relief to do that. And we could start it that way, but that would have to be at the consent of all parties and the judge to do so. So given what has been sought by the appellant, I don't think that would be too much to ask for, given that they had attempted to secretly from the court from the beginning. And they thought that was the right process to go through. So it wasn't necessarily, I don't think, poor judgment to attempt that. It's just that now we've had this determination, we do need to seek another way to resolve the dispute materially, rather than just the practical matter.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Bowles? Thank you very much, Mr Bowles. Appreciate that. So I'll move that the Planning and Environment Court Status Action Report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a seconder for that? Thank you councillor Kunselman. Any discussion? Put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We'll now move on to item seven, and this is a matter that we will be using under delegation in this committee here. And it's the Development Application 6610/2022 MCU, Recommendation for Parmac Property Investments. Fast Food Premises, KFC. Would anyone like, may I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. Obviously, this came to us some time ago. It was quite a contentious issue for us in council on how to manage this. Could you just give us some ideas to what's being asked today? Is it looking at the matter again, or is it just looking at the new, what's happening at the new site, yeah?
So the request relates to the approval that was issued. One of the steps in the process under the Planning Act is the applicant can make a request to change an approval and make what's called change representations. Under the previous sector, it's called a negotiated decision notice. That's probably a more common term and frequently still used as shorthand for this step of the process. It's an opportunity for the applicant to make changes to conditions or request changes to conditions or tweaks and things like that. And what happens is this decision notice, depending on how the council decides to make the application changed, replaces the decision notice, but it doesn't replace the fact that the decision has been made and the application has been approved. It deals with the representations made about the conditions only. So there's a short summary table of the nature of the changes, which is the conditions that have been sought to be changed. A large number of the changes that have been sought, the council officers do not recommend that change has been made as requested. There are some changes that we do recommend the council consider changing. And really to summarise, I would say that what we are looking at is tweaking of conditions more than anything. In my opinion, I don't believe that these are dramatic changes to the decision council has already made.
And it's my understanding that this has come to the council because the original approval came from council?
That's correct.
That's why it's come through. May I ask, I'm just looking at page, is it one hundred and one fifty-six, just that summary table with the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven changes? I just, do anyone, any, does anyone have any questions on any of those changes that have been recommended? Are you satisfied what was in the documentation? Okay, in that case, thank you, Mr Bowles.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll move that the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee resolved to approve in part the representations to change the application number 6610/2022/MCU. Subject conditions as contained in Attachment One of this report. Do I have a seconder for that? There's no seconder? Well, we can't deal with the matter then, can we? Sorry? Do you want to put your microphone?
Sorry, could I suggest that the matter be adjourned until later in the meeting so that we, you know, understand the ramifications? I do have something to say on that, on the thing, but if there's no seconder, there's no motion to discuss.
That is correct. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions? I guess with adjourning it, we only have one other item. So we'll be back to it.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll second.
Sorry?
For the purpose of discussion.
I know that councillor Fekna has, for the purpose of discussion, has seconded, thank you very much. And obviously, appreciate that. It's now been seconded. Now I open it for discussion, councillor Tully.
All right, thank you. There's one particular element that I'm really happy that the officers are not recommending any change. And there's a couple of other minor issues that I do want to discuss and suggest a couple of changes. That's the one in relation to the covered or uncovered waiting bays. This has a long history in this city of requiring waiting bays in fast food premises to be covered. Now, the applicant, KFC, is talking about the aesthetics of the building. That was never the intention when this particular provision commenced to be applied. Firstly, it was to the McDonald's store at Goodna, and it was a workplace health and safety issue. And that was to ensure that workers there, going out into the sun and going out into the rain, would be fully covered at all times. So I'm really disappointed that the applicant is still pressing the point in relation to this issue being a workplace health and safety issue. And I was able to find a copy of the Queensland Times still online from the 28th of January 2005, in relation to the McDonald's situation. And it was a seven-year legal stoush that McDonald's fought the council decision from 1998 to require a permanent awning over its drive-through. And I note that the local council at the time, I'll just read it because I think it's relevant, because to me, this is a really important issue that we need to stand up to these multinationals over. It says, "Now, Goodna-based councillor Paul Tully believes he has forced the burger giant to cover up, to stop burgers and chips getting drenched in the pink-up bays. This company is wa- This company has wasted thousands of shareholders' dollars in fighting this matter. Um this is a significant victory for junior staff who in the past have been forced to work in the sun and rain and for drivers in Goodna who no longer have to suffer soggy hamburgers with beetroot juice running down their arms. So um we we stood by our our decision at the time, and I really believe it. And I know the applicant has raised other places, and I don't know why that that condition hasn't been consistently applied. But I'd like to thank the staff in in uh their recommendation of being very strong on that irrespective of the um a- aesthetics of it. Now, the two issues that I do have um um some um i- i- issues with um are as follows. And just um got a little bit of documentation here that I just want to uh touch on. One, if if you go to page one hundred and thirty-two of the report, this is i- i- in relation to the proposed relocation of the building. And they want to take out both that that have been relocated. And I'm not canv- canvassing the original decision of approval, this is the amendments. They want to remove the requirement that either be removed uh to another place in Goodna or a character zone within the Ipswich area uh completely. They could put it anywhere, they could put it up at the back of Mount Mort um or anywhere in the in the city. And that totally loses the um, you know, the character of it in a in an urban setting. Um they also want to delete in paragraphs, par- paragraph C uh two on page one hundred and thirty-two the requirement for uh the relevant report uh containing um measured drawings, photographs and so on and a documentation about the location and condition to be done by a suitably qualified heritage consultant. Uh I don't, I don't support that change. Um the other item is on page one hundred and forty of the report. And these are only two mi- minor issues. Um they want to, they they don't want to comply with what the um uh current provision is um under our planning scheme policy for the footpath frontage to be two point five metres. Now, that's pretty explicit in the report uh that it's two point five metres. That is a heavily trafficked pedestrian area in Goodna. There's a footpath on either side of of the road. Um there's many people in uh uh walking, there are many people in um uh buggies and um you know, bicycles and um, just trying to think of the word, the um transport.
Those mobility scooter things, those mobility scooters?
Mobility scooters and stuff like that. Uh my firm view is that we should uh stick with um what the requirement is under the um, under under our scheme and our and our policies. If we don't, we'll never get that upgraded along there. Now, the applicant can't say that they won't be responsible for additional uh pedestrian traffic and uh use of that area. Um obviously, it it will be, and it would be normal to require and apply um a- apply what whatever the standard rules are for um any development of this kind. So um with that in mind, um and I I've just uh referred this to um the committee clerk with an amendment, and I'll read it um once it appears.
I was saying, I was wondering if we could, if we could discuss those four things that you've raised, or?
Well, if I move the amendment, then then we can probably.
Some of it, I think, has already been done, so.
Hmm.
I think things like the um, that report, uh so that's um on page, that's five, C two. A report contained, that's, that report's already been done by heritage consultants, my understanding.
Yeah.
From council offices. Do you mind if we talk about the four things that you've raised, for your information, or?
Yeah.
Well, for us to have a discussion, yeah.
Yeah, okay, um all right, well, I'll move um that the following words be added after the word approval at the end of the motion, that is, the motion to adopt the recommendation. And the words are, subject to the following variations in attachment one of the report. Five C one on page one hundred and thirty-two of the report, that the words either within Goodna or a character zone remain as part of the condition. Five C two on page one hundred and thirty-two of the report, that the words prepared by a suitably qualified heritage consultant remain as part of the condition. The next bit is to comply with the act. Um the reason for these changes are, one, that the preservation of the dwelling in Goodna or in a character zone in the city of Ipswich is essential to ensure that the location of the new site is appropriate and to ensure that it is restored as far as possible and retains or enhances its original streetscape presence and overall setting. And two, that it is essential in relation to this sensitive heritage matter that the proposed report be prepared by a suitably qualified heritage consultant. Um continuing on the twenty twenty-one A on page one hundred and forty uh of the report, that the condition be amended to read. The applicant must provide a detailed design for Franny Street Works upgrading the existing footpath to a two four point five metre footpath in accordance with section one point one point four in brackets five of Planning Scheme Policy Three and Council Standard Drawing S R dot one nine. The reason for this change is that a two point five metre wide footpath is, to quote, is required in accordance with council's road standard class sub arterial for Queen Street, as stated on page one hundred and fifteen of the report.
Thank you. Um as the, I just got the movement and the second of the the motion. Do you mind if I just ask a couple of questions of council officers, because I, just to clarify a couple of things? Could I speak to the relevant council officer about items that have been raised by uh councillor Tully?
Good morning, Mayor Councilors, Anthony Bowles, acting Development Planning Manager.
Thank you. Um referencing um uh councillor Tully's, we're on five, C one. The nomination there, for the preservation of the dwelling. Um do you have any views on that, or any issues?
Uh I suppose it might be just worth explaining the sequence of events that led to that request and what has happened in the meantime. Um so this request was lodged shortly after the original decision was made. Um at the time, council hadn't just made a decision on the application to relocate the um existing property to um Rosewood. We were still in the process of deciding that, in fact, we were fairly early in the process of that. Um since then, that has been approved. Um so in all likelihood, the the property will um uh be relocated to its approved location in the character zone. Um look, the the reason why the officers have made the recommendation as as it's written is um reflecting the um the way the table of assessment is drafted, um which permits uh the relocation of the property with certain caveats. Um we did include those extra um lines in there, but they are part of the um table of assessment that is contained within a footnote rather than the actual um um the criteria for determining whether the works is exempt. Um so gi- given that the approval has been issued to relocate the house to a character zone, um and that that this request came in before that that occurred, I I think the matter will be dealt with, whether the changes are made or or not. Um and I I don't have too much of an issue if it's retained in there as suggested by councillor Tully.
I guess so.
Because that that matter has been progressed and an approval has been issued to deal with that.
Okay, so there's no issues with with the with the proposed amendment?
Could I just come back on that one? I I understand exactly what what you're saying, but the um um the way in which this would change, even if there is an approval for a specific location now, uh this uh is a change in in the condition, and it could be um under this condition. Um it could be moved to Mount Mort or, because it just, it's up to them, a- anywhere in the local government area. They could still comply with that now, as a change, that's what worries me.
Yeah, that that's correct, and the reason for that is because that's what the table of assessment permits currently in the planning scheme. So for example, if we weren't um looking at this application at all, and we were looking at the relocation of the ha- the ha- the house individually, that outcome could be obtained through exempt development, because that requirement, the character component and the Goodna component is a footnote, it's a it's a desirable thing to have, but it isn't contained within the actual table of assessment. So that, that's the reason why we've s- made the su- suggestion to agree to the change. However, given the circumstances that have progressed and the likelihood of um the positive outcome being relocated to a character zone going ahead, uh I I'm not too concerned if um if it's retained.
What what concerns me is why they would be seeking that unless they want to open up possibilities of, sorry, yeah, yeah, of open up other other possibilities. I guess it comes back to the 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 standard uh requirement of all conditions, that they be reasonable and relevant.
Hmm.
And I think there's a a a powerful argument that, given the history of this case and the a listing that it that it did have, that it is reasonable re- and relevant, um that it be um uh retained um either in Goodna or 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 in a um character zone that we've agreed to. Even though that's been agreed to already, this would open up an opportunity for them to um override that. And wouldn't require our decision, because um it doesn't say anywhere in the local government area that 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 we agree to. It's, it would be their decision.
Well, that that's right, and as uh as I'm saying, just reflecting the 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 adability under the current table of assessment, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh you know, without a change that council, that part of the character code, um or the table of assessment, um it's difficult for us to impose additional requirements. However, um the the council is able to do that and is able to include those. Um and if the, if there is um that desire um to relocate it to a place that isn't the place that has been approved, um the the next method of that pathway would be through the appeal, um potentially an appeal. So um you know, that that does, as you say, provide council with some certainty about the location. And if the applicant isn't satisfied with the council's decision, then there there is another pathway for them to pursue that.
I- if this stayed as it was, um or as it is at the moment, before it's changed, wouldn't need an appeal. All they'd have to do is to relocate it with a Goodna or a character zone.
That that's great, that that's a third, that's, and that's what I anticipate to occur, given the the approval that's been issued, which, as I said, at the time of the request, it hadn't been issued. In fact, we were still in the process of negotiating that. So I think the the reason for the request isn't so much that um freeing up another option, um but for ensuring that um you know, they have options if we refuse the um relocation to Rosewood, which we haven't done, we've approved that.
No, I understand that. So so the the the, if they're genuine, um I don't mean that in any wrongful way, but if they're genuine that that it is going to the character zone in Rosewood, um well then retaining this as it is won't make any difference to their position.
Yep, which is why I'm not too concerned about your recommended change.
Yep.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next one, which is the five C two, um which has a report, and they've deleted the uh prepared by a suitably qualified heritage consultant, which I see that you wanted to keep in. I'm just trying to look it up, but from memory, I remember seeing some type of report with detailed photographs inside and outside. Was that a a heritage consultant of?
Not quite, um it it wa- a report was submitted, um but it was um by a qualified architect.
Right, okay.
Uh so it's slight slightly different, um I suppose, skill set, but to the standard that satisfied councils um heritage experts.
All right, well, on that basis, I'd be happy to uh remove from my motion that 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 aspect of five C two.
Okay. Um so twenty-one A, which is the width of the uh footpath um to two point five, in in the motion there, can I just ca- call it, just to um clarify? Um it would be two point five for just outside on their their property, or do they do it further along?
That's, that's correct. The the reason why the app, um the change has been considered by the council officers is there is an existing footpath, which is two metres wide uh nearby, so that the the change to the wording is so that it marries up with an existing footpath. Um and what what will occur if it is two point five is it'll just be a portion that doesn't match up. It'll just be two point five, and then it'll be two metres. Um but, you know.
So it'll just be, what, twenty-five centimetres wide on each side?
Would be to have it flared coming coming into the.
Yeah, it it could do that.
Yeah, and the reason is, I I've had a look at this yesterday. Outside the property um to the north, uh there's um large trees, which I think prevented the footpath larger, larger trees, and not just saplings, which prevented the footpath at that stage from being any wider. But there are no trees on the footpath outside number sixteen. And I think for the applicant to quibble about um going to the standard as required under our policies of two point five um is is pretty poor. Um because that whole footpath, it's exceptionally busy from the uh uh near the Goodna roundabout on the uh eastern side of Queen Street up to Alice Street. And um i- if if that's our policy and that's our general requirement, I don't think we we should vary that. And as I say, there are plenty of places where um that could be flared.
Hmm.
Well, yeah, without any impediment to a pedestrian or any danger to a pedestrian.
Yep. Uh look, I appreciate that perspective, and I I don't have any major issue with that change.
Thank you. I don't have any questions of Mr. Bowles, has anyone else? Thank you very much, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
So if I could just confirm, I think the amendment you're putting forward is five C one and twenty-one A? Would that be correct as?
Yeah.
Who there?
And we'd also, it says the the reason for these changes, now there's only one change in in the five C, so it would be that the reason for this change is and just retain one and delete two, which I think's already happened. Yeah, and that that would consist of that there. Oh, can I just say in speaking to the motion, I don't think I've done that yet now, but the motion itself is pretty self-explanatory, and I it it was a difficult decision, and people know my view, but at the end of the day, when we come to um uh considering variations to that, I think the public still expects us to to look carefully at you know, all the conditions involved in a situation like this. And and I thank Mr. Bowles for the comments that probably neither of those um uh changes uh would would make a a lot of difference, but it would still comply with our general intent and policy.
Now, thank, thank you, councillor Tully, and I also note the the discussion you had about, um I guess, three B, about the um the the covered uh waiting bays as as well. I think the only parts in Ipswich that don't have it are those, those, the P D A in Springfield, isn't it, those areas that?
There's a couple of others I mentioned, and I'm I'm surprised with that. And I'd ask Mr. Bowles to, you know, there was a, an intention of this council to um address that situation, and um I know there was one case um um in a fast food store at uh Belbert Park, uh where it was admitted, and it was told, I was told after the event that it was a mistake. So um I just think that's, that's an important issue. Um but anyway, that's not part of any amendment, because I fully support what was recommended.
But I don't, hold on. Um so as the mover, I'm more than happy to accept those amendments for those. I'll just, with the second, I'm getting a nod from councillor Fickner, thank you. So Vicky, I'll just get you to show the live motion, so councils are aware what we're reviewing. So if I just go back up so I can make sure that the, so the motion as it stands is now, I'm just gonna read it from the screen, Vicky, that the G O W resolved to approve in part the representations to change development application um subject to the conditions contained in attachment one of this report, um and that, I guess, what, do you have the actual, what the motion will be?
Yes, up the top, the words are, subject to the following variations.
In attachment one of the report, so that's those two conditions?
That's correct, wi- with the reasons incorporated there to comply with the legislation. I just asked the C E O if it's the act silent on exactly what you've got to say for the reasons, and and I think that probably encapsulates.
Yep.
Reasons.
Chair, yes, councillor Tully, that's satisfactory, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on this report or the motion? No, in that case, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. I'll just wait for councillor Johnick to come back. Thank you. Item number eight is a late report, and I do apologize to the public that it was only published, I think, earlier this week, rather than last week. We are trying to hit some um pretty tight deadlines. So uh today, this, the report is on the new Ipswich Planning Scheme draft, a stage one planning scheme preparation, stage two, public engagement. Uh may I have the relevant council officer come to the lectern, please?
Good morning, Brett Davey, manager of City Design.
Thank you. Mr. Davey, may I just confirm that we're still, we've been aiming to do public consultation during March and May? Are we still on schedule for that?
Uh we are behind schedule at the moment, ma'am, by roughly a month. Um the urgency of this report was to try and get as close to possible as the, in that window. Uh the window had provided for us to essentially start notification at the start of May. Uh oh, sorry, to finish at the end of May, which would put us obviously a month ahead of of where we're looking right now. So we'll do our best to um get to notification as quickly as possible, and that's the recommendation in the report. Uh and the mitigation for that is we we lose some time after notification is completed. So we will have to be very efficient in our review of the community submissions.
Okay, so that my public consultation will start in April and go to June?
Best case scenario, April. Best case scenario, April and June, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Davy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two recommendations here, and the recommendations are that council endorse the revised Ipswich Plan twenty-twenty-four draft and draft planning scheme policies as contained attachments four to twelve for the purpose of the continuation of the first state interest review. And B, that following receipt of the chief executive, and that's the chief executive of the Department of State Development Infrastructure Local Government Planning, endorsement of the Ipswich Plan twenty-twenty-four draft, that the Ipswich City Council CEO undertake steps to comply with any conditions of the chief executive's endorsement and undertake the necessary steps to commence the public consultation of the draft planning scheme and planning scheme policies. So I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any discussion? I'm only just delighted that this is progressing so we can get that to a public consultation. And I also want to thank councils, we've been having, I think, fortnightly sessions on this for probably nearly two years on this to, as a council, in progressing this to get this, to update this planning scheme. So I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We come to the last item, which is a joint notice of motion. The joint notice of motion to upgrade of the memorial honouring the life of Deirdre Kennedy. So this is a joint notice of motion submitted by myself and also the Division Three councillors, councillors Marnie Doyle and councillor Andrew Fekner. We're proposing an upgrade to the memorial of the memorial that is currently located near Bill Patterson Oval at Limestone Park, which honours the life of Deirdre Kennedy. Do I have a second for that? I think we moved it, so I don't know if we can second it. Thank you, three movers. So councillor Kunsman, thank you for seconding that. It's speaking to it. On the ninth of the thirteenth of April in nineteen seventy-three, seventeen-month-old Deirdre Kennedy was abducted from her Ipswich home and murdered. It was a crime that shook the nation and sent a wave of fear and despair across Ipswich. Almost fifty years on this, joint notice of motion proposes to upgrade the existing memorial plaque, which is currently attached to a rotunda in Limestone Park. The scale and location of the existing memorial plaque does not adequately represent the significance of this sad moment in Ipswich's history. In its current position, the Kennedy family, friends and residents are unable to leave fitting tributes and floral arrangements to celebrate and honour Deirdre's life. Therefore, myself and the Division Three councillors, councillor Marnie Doyle and councillor Andrew Fekner, are seeking council support to upgrade the current plaque, attach it to a sandstone block or a similar base, and relocate it to a neighbouring garden bed. It's hoped this would serve as an appropriate and longstanding memorial of Deirdre Kennedy's life, creating a suitable place for Deirdre's family to come together with the community on the upcoming fiftieth anniversary on Thursday, the thirteenth of April twenty-twenty-three. This proposal is supported by the Kennedy family, who would welcome council's ongoing support in ensuring Deirdre's memory will never be forgotten. And the motion is that council upgrade the current memorial and upgrade the existing plaque to a brass or a bronze plaque or similar, with the design inscription of the new plaque to be confirmed by myself, councillor Doyle and councillor Fekner on behalf of the Kennedy family. That B, relocate the new memorial plaque to the garden bed adjacent to the existing plaque mounted on a sandstone base. C, to have these works completed before the thirteenth of April twenty-twenty-three. And D, report back to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee following the thirteenth of April twenty-twenty-three on the cost and timeline for any additional embellishments the Kennedy family proposes for this site for council's consideration. I'll hand over to councillor Doyle and councillor Fekner if they wish to speak any further on this.
I think that this is a really important project for us to undertake. It was quite touching. The mayor, councillor Doyle, and I met with Fay Kennedy. I think that something interesting for me about this particular, about this particular memorial, I think going forward into the future, it won't just be about recognising the life of Deirdre Kennedy, but about Fay and her family and the struggle that they've gone through, but also representing the advocacy. And I didn't know this until quite recently because it is a case that obviously predates my life here in Ipswich. But Fay was really crucial in getting the double jeopardy legislation changed. And that was a direct result of the loss that she suffered in Deirdre. So the memorial, yes, it will continue to commemorate Deirdre, but I think we'll commemorate Fay and the hard work that she's done over the years to change the world, to make it a better place. Just with regards to D here, in terms of the proposed, um, proposals that the family might have to upgrade the site further, Fay did mention to us that her son, he's a tree lopper and he'd like to donate some timber to put a bench there. So I think that that's something that I'll be supporting in the future. I think it's a good idea, give a place to sit and reflect.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. Yes, thank you. I'll open up for any other discussion? Yes, councillor Tully?
Fairly briefly, ma'am. What you said is true that this case shook the nation. And without going into the legal issues, the matter had gone to the High Court. It hurt Ipswich, it hurt the people of Ipswich, I remember it very clearly. The double jeopardy legislation was not retrospective, so that matter was put to bed, I guess, is the best way of saying it. But it's one of those really emotional things that will never leave the psyche of Ipswich and the people of Ipswich. Could I just suggest two small amendments which don't change the intention? This, Matt Deirdre's name in the press and the media was always the full name of Deirdre Marie Kennedy. And I'd like to see that included in the first line of the motion because that's what will be on the plaque. And she was always referred to that in all reporting of the case. The other is just a more technical thing in the paragraph B, it says relocate the new memorial plaque. I think probably the word should be locate the new memorial plaque rather than relocate.
Well, I guess at the moment, and can I just say that Fay Kennedy was very grateful ten years ago when the council, at the fortieth, that put the plaque there on the rotunda, that's meant a great deal to her and the family. And I guess we're looking at relocating, although it'll be a new plaque.
But it's, but we'd be, wouldn't it be relocating the existing plaque adjacent to the new memorial plaque?
I guess we're actually doing a newer plaque that's a brass plaque. I think we measure forty centimetres by thirty centimetres, so that, it's a smaller plaque that's on the rotunda, so we're not just picking that up and moving it.
Well, I still think the word should be locate the new memorial plaque because it hasn't been constructed yet.
Yep. I have no issues with taking in B to take out the word Marie and leave it as locate the new plaque. You okay with that? Thank you very much, councillor Tully.
In my eye, I believe.
Yes, and the draft does have...
Sorry, chair, can, I'm not sure that the inclusion of Marie based on media coverage of this matter over the last fifty years is appropriate. You really need to talk to Fay about that first.
Yep. And I think the, just looking at the draft graphics of that with Deirdre Marie Kennedy written, I think it's been sent to Fay today, I think.
Can I just make the point, please, that I was just talking about how the whole of Ipswich referred to her. The fact that the media did it was, I guess it led to how it was described and was always known, and we're planning to put the full name on the plaque. So I think the motion of the council should reflect the description on the, on the plaque. Not because, you know, the Brisbane Telegraph used that, but because of how she was known right throughout the Ipswich community for many decades.
Yeah, as councillor Bowles said, the actual decision will be up to Fay, her mum, but the draft graphic of the plaque does have Deirdre Marie Kennedy on it. So I'll just check with the other joint movers. Are you happy to leave the motion as it is or do you wish to add, Maria, it doesn't concern me either way?
The important thing that it is what the mother wants.
Yeah. So in that case, we'll just leave it as it is, I think, but do accept that B to locate? Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour...
Just to clarify, ma'am, councillor Kunsman, we will have to agree.
You're the official seconded here?
I am, yeah.
Yes, yes, she...
If we keep it where it is, and specifically like how it is fine with me.
Yep, thank you. I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. And I also, see, I know that the organisation has done some preliminary work that's not cost anything in order to meet that timeframe. So thank you. There were no matters arising, there were no procedural motions or formal matters. I know it's one minute to ten, so I propose that we do an adjournment for thirty minutes till ten-thirty. May I put that to the vote? Those in favour, please raise your hand. That's everyone except for councillor Madison, so it's passed. Thank you, see back at ten-thirty. Thank you. I'll formally close the meeting now at ten-oh-one and move that we adjourn to ten-thirty. I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous except for councillor Madison. Those against? Thanks, Madson. Thank you very much. See you at ten-thirty.